Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the board of commissioners meeting today. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. As is also customary, we have the back through the gap, our backs at the gap.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Right now, we are between more than forty-eight thousand personnel over here, and I'm Ms. Angela King-Swarden. And this month, we have live fire artillery training is happening right now, the sixth through the tenth. Demolition training will be on March fourteenth through the seventeenth, and March twenty-sixth through twenty-seventh. And these are trains in additional to what we would call our steady state training, which is our MIR Army airfield and other training that's happening at the installation. Also of note, our spring burn season is going to begin shortly and will run for approximately May. And for the most up-to-date information about those events, please visit our Facebook page or sign up for alerts on Alert PA. It's ready.pagov. And when you reach the menu, you can scroll down and select for Indian Town Gap. They get text messages sent right to your home over conducting training. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now seek approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting as printed.
Can I second that?
It's been seconded. Any comment, question, or additions or deletions? Here in all favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so ordered. The word to this committee's report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have receipts on March the fifth and March the sixth of $2,519,244.83. Our total cash was $3,258,471.24. The expenditure this week of $2,622,129.37. Our undistributed tax claim is $106,736.75. So that leaves us a balance of $529,605.12.
To approve the pressures report?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Thank you, Sally. Did I fail to mention earlier that after we adjourn this meeting, we will adjourn to a convene an executive committee immediately following. Just for everyone's awareness. Now we will move on to Jamie with the...
I've read that.
Oh, I'm sorry. With more important business to...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gordon, I'll let you lead the discussion.
After twenty-two years of service, my records chief Brenda Saracini has decided to retire, which is appropriately dressed in black for the moment because it is a mourning period for me because Brenda is an excellent records chief. It's a tedious and arduous type of position that requires, you know, skill and calculating senses and time for those individuals that come through our system. Brenda's been faithful to me for the past twenty-two years, and I'm going to be sad to see her go. But it's time, I don't know if I could last twenty-two years in her position, and she's decided it's time for her and her family to enjoy other things than calculating time for prisoners. So based upon that, you know, I wish her the best of luck, and she certainly deserves all the accolades coming to her for that.
Thank you. I was thinking that you're not just giving this job up for a lifetime.
You'd like that.
That's what I was thinking, our earlier discussion. But we do have a proclamation, Jamie. Would you please...
Sure. Whereas Brenda J. Saracini began her career with the County of Lebanon, employed as a general clerk for the Lebanon County Correctional Facility on April seventh, nineteen ninety-seven. Whereas, as the chief of records, Brenda continued to remain a vital asset as member of the prison staff, exemplifying the ability to maintain accurate prisoner records most efficiently. Whereas throughout her tenure, Brenda served the county with devotion and commitment, providing integrity to her profession. She performed her duties and responsibilities in an efficient manner, reflecting great credit upon herself and Lebanon County government. And whereas, on March fifteenth, twenty nineteen, Brenda will retire as records chief at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility with over twenty-two years of distinguished service. Now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our residents, all of our residents and the prison board unite to express our appreciation to Brenda for her many years of dedicated service, faithfulness, and hard work on a job well done. We extend congratulations and best wishes for a future filled with happiness and the very best retirement.
We will now seek a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Proud to make a motion that we adopt a proclamation honoring Saracini.
I'll second the motion with sincere thanks and gratitude for your many years of service.
Yes, nothing better for us to measure good things by longevity. So it really is a stabilizing part of life in this county, and we really appreciate all the years that you've dedicated to it so well. So I'd like to present this to you. Oh, yes, we did. We have a motion to second.
Yeah, I guess we should. I make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
That's all we got, three votes.
Aye.
Okay. It's a close one, Brenda.
I was hoping it stalled.
It may not be as close for real.
He tried to block me out.
Thank you.
To properly measure.
You're retiring a lot of people here.
I know. It might be me. Good to see you. I just want to say thanks for everything you do, always did for us in the sheriff's office. Thank you so much.
You know what it takes. Welcome to all the new arrivals. For being here, Jessica's entourage has arrived. So we would like to proceed with business at hand.
Those are Jess's groupies. As I guess everyone knows, after today, Jess has one more day left. More will be her last day of work with us after forty-four years of service. I was in grade school when she started. So we're here to advocate for this proclamation on her behalf. She will leave, but she'll never really be replaced. Certainly Melissa will fill her position, but we can't replace Jess. As you can see, there are people here from a number of departments who Jess has helped greatly throughout the many years. So she's not only helped our department, our staff, and the people we serve, but she's reached out and helped many other departments over the years. Her expertise, it's forty-four years' worth of expertise. And many of the assignments that she had, she implemented new projects, new programs throughout the years. She's been the civil service guru for the county for a number of years. Then they went and changed her owner in her last year or so. So even as she's working in her last week, she's still trying to figure out the new civil services and commitment to handle all our personnel matters. She handled all the involuntary commitment process and procedures, written a lot of the policy for that, has actually guided the attorneys in those hearings and proceedings for decades. So I think they're panicking a little bit, too. So we're all panicking a little bit, but, you know, change is inevitable, and Jess certainly deserves her retirement. And we wish her the best of luck.
Very nice. Thank you. We do have a proclamation that...
Whereas Jessica Jess Creeter began her career with the County of Lebanon as a clerk steno for mental health, mental retardation, now known as mental health, intellectual disabilities, early intervention on November eighteenth, nineteen seventy-four. Whereas, a devoted and committed employee who exemplified integrity in her profession, Jess has been a valuable asset and critical figure in the administration and management of vital programs of the MHIDEI agency. And whereas throughout her tenure, Jess performed her duties and responsibilities in an effective and efficient manner, reflecting great credit upon her and Lebanon County government. Whereas, on March ninth, twenty nineteen, Jessica Creeter will retire as deputy administrator of mental health, intellectual disabilities, early intervention with over forty-four years of distinguished service. Now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, express our appreciation to Jess for her many years of dedication, faithfulness, and hard work on a job well done throughout her career. We extend congratulations and best wishes on a future filled with happiness and the very best retirement.
We will seek a motion to adopt that proclamation.
So moved with great pleasure and admiration for a strong woman who has stood the test of time. Thank you.
And I'll second the motion, certainly without indicating my pride and appreciation for that kind of dedication to the county. I think we all greatly appreciate it, so thank you for your service.
I'll just add, the entire county is grateful for all your service. And, you know, the words that we just heard really covered it pretty well. And that's a great testimony to your work here, so thank you. Appreciate it, Jessica.
The only thing I didn't hear was Kevin say that she trained how many executive directors from mental health? And she did a good job, Kevin. You turned out all right.
She held a little longer.
She took good care of me, that's for sure. How many administrators were there? Four?
About one a decade.
The toughest one.
Well, we have a motion to second. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so ordered. Oh, yes, Jessica, please, it's your...
Yeah.
I remember the spotlight.
He keeps hassling me because he says my filter just keeps... This has been almost my whole life. It's been a great journey and a great learning experience. It's time for a new chapter. Time to see what I really want to be when I grow up. And I thank the county for the good benefits, the time, the opportunity to grow.
So many people have benefited from your pernacity, that's the word, pernacity, whatever. I heard stories about you just marching down the hall, not being afraid, and yeah, it was great. So you certainly deserve this.
And you, Kevin, I think you know this, but maybe some people don't. You serve as clerk steno. Clerk steno, sorry.
The judge is going to recruit you soon. He knows you're a stenographer. They're hard to find.
We're handing out cards with our cell phone number on them. The people, you know, will be calling it certainly, and I'm sure a lot of other people would like to still tap into the expertise that she's accumulated throughout the many years.
He said no one's irreplaceable, someone's just to be missed more than others. The kind of words I was getting, it just made me wonder.
Yeah, it's just, you know, as a layperson, you guys are the professionals in your work. But I often tell people, you have the toughest jobs society has to offer, you know, and we're the last stop for many people in terms of where else can they turn. And so to do that with your professionalism and dignity is just a great tribute to all the years you've been through. So thank you. And now we'll present this.
Thank you for coming here, really. And good luck to you.
Thank you.
If you choose to...
Thank you.
Jamie, do you want to do your...
No, I don't have a personal first name. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. I've been handling personnel transactions this morning. The staff of the seminar. First to have resignations and terminations. First David S. Weber, full-time correctional officer at the prison. Termination for job abandonment effective February eighteenth. Wesley Bankus, full-time correctional officer at the prison. Resignation to a corrected date of February fifth. Stephanie L. Winger, docket specialist in domestic relations. Resignation effective February twenty-seventh. Teresa Schlebach, docket specialist in domestic relations. Resignation effective February twenty-first. Elizabeth Judd, Assistant Public Defender Two in the Public Defender's Office. Resignation effective March fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And Arlene Vives, casual call development assistant in Nova Center. Resignation effective March fourth.
Make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That way, accept the resignations. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Leave of absence request for Linda Core in the assessment office for twelve weeks, effective March sixth, twenty nineteen. Expected return June third.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That way, approve that leave. Any questions are coming? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so ordered.
Next would be a request for a motion to approve Treasurer Sally Nguyen's request to have her current office employees and Belinda Spicer in tax claim work additional two point five hours per week for approximately ten weeks, effective March eleventh. As well to have Collette Arndt's work in her office for approximately ten to twelve weeks, with total hours worked during this timeframe not to exceed three hundred fifty hours, effective also March eleventh, obviously for tax bill processing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That way, approve Treasurer Nguyen's request. Any comment or question? Here in all favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so ordered.
Next, a request from Judge Tillwalk for a motion to approve a recommendation to add interpreter duty pay to one of the current district judge clerk positions within MDJ Burna's office at the rate of $1,500 annually, or $5,769 biweekly, effective February twenty-fifth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That way, approve Judge Tillwalk's recommendation. Any comment or question?
I do have a question. That's the only interpreter in that office, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Changes of status, I'm going to read off all but Tina Litz, which I'll ask for a separate motion. So first, to approve Kim Keener to go in, sorry, in the area agency to go from part-time senior center manager one to a substitute senior center manager one. No change in the rate, effective April fifteenth. For Marielena Dalmo White, MDJ clerk in MDJ Burna's office, to add a clerk interpreter pay, effective February twenty-fifth, at $5,769 additional biweekly. For Tyler Wolford, go from a full-time correctional officer to a telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services, pay rate of $1633 per hour, March twenty-fifth, effective March twenty-fifth. For John D. Lurch III, to go from a full-time deputy sheriff to deputy sergeant from the sheriff's office, from a pay grade eight-ten to eight-twelve at $1389.75 biweekly, effective February twenty-fifth. For John Correll, probation to go from probation officer one to probation officer two in probation services, which is from a grade two to a grade three at $2,021.08 biweekly, effective March eleventh. Elliot Katz, Public Defender's Office, to go from an assistant public defender one to an assistant public defender two, at a pay rate of $2,011.08 biweekly, effective March twenty-fifth.
Make a motion to approve those changes of status.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so ordered.
Last change of status would be for Tina M. Litz at the prison, to go from training director to deputy laborer of treatment at a grade fourteen, $2,356.34 biweekly, effective March eleventh.
I'd like to abstain from this particular motion to avoid any plans of conflict of interest.
Will you can second?
I want to abstain from anticipation of this particular motion.
This chair, I'll second the motion. And any comment or question beyond the head? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extensions? Thank you. Motion carries to the floor.
Further transactions, sheriff would like to hire Kristy R. Reiver as a part-time door monitor at $10.43 per hour, effective March eleventh. In children and youth, recommendation to hire Bailey Van Fleet as a case worker two at $1,267.90 biweekly, March eighteenth. District Attorney's Office, recommendation to hire Jonathan M. Norton as a central booking agent at $12.97 an hour, effective March eleventh. In the Department of Emergency Services, Wayne F. Rulo as a telecommunicator for $16.33 per hour, effective March twenty-fifth, as well as Kyle C. Wine as a telecommunicator at $16.33 per hour, also effective March twenty-fifth. President Judge Tillwalk is recommending the hire of Diana Rosa Marcher as a collection officer in probation for $972.54 biweekly, effective March eleventh. And also for Olivia Spees as a probation officer one at $1604.79 biweekly, effective March eighteen.
Make a motion to approve those hires.
Second.
We have a motion to second. More questions or comments? Here in all favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so ordered.
All right. For salary board. So we need a motion to approve all the transactions previously read, plus the following, and those would be the motion to approve Sally Nguyen's request to have her current employees and Belinda Spicer in tax claim work additional two and a half hours per week, and also Collette Arndt's to work ten to twelve weeks, with total hours not to exceed three hundred fifty. And to approve President Judge Tillwalk's recommendation to add interpreter duties to an employee clerk in the MDJ Burna's office at $1,500 additional. Oh, it was above where my instructions read. Okay. Thank you. This would be for Elizabeth Hamm, part-time assistant administrator, system administrator in the Department of Emergency Services, to go to grade twelve, step five, at $2,014 per hour, effective February twenty-second.
Okay, further discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Is there an extension?
Yes. That wasn't further, I'm sorry. That's an extension. Extension.
Extension.
The extension of the extension.
Conference seminar requests. For the mandated trainings, Daniel Seaman, Ted Conley, Tanya Kip, Carl Stumpf in assessment, going to the South Central Chapter Assessors Association Pennsylvania meeting in Gettysburg, March twenty-second. Costs are lodging, meals, mileage, parking, and tolls, three credits by the Department of State. Jennifer Whitman in the District Attorney's Office, DCAS training in Harrisburg, March twenty-eighth, no cost. Four credits provided by the AOPC. Also for Jennifer Whitman in the District Attorney's Office, Veterans Court Mentor Training and Appreciation Day, April thirtieth in Lebanon, no cost, provides four and a half credits from the AOPC. Brandon Smith in the Drug and Alcohol Commission, attending the PA CARES Training Summit in Denver, May twenty-second, Denver, PA, that is, May twenty-second, no costs, except mileage, and seven credit hours from the Department of Drug and Alcohol. Kyle Wine, Tyler Wolford, Wayne Rulo, dispatchers in DES, attending the Advanced 13.0 Emergency Medical Dispatch in Allentown, April first, second, and third, $1,095 total, that's $365 each, plus mileage and meals, provides twenty-four credit hours from PMA. Kim Spang, Greg Hetrick, Bob Meese, Chris Leising, and Julie Channing in planning to attend the Advanced Blood Plane Management in Pennsylvania Seminar, eleven in April second. Only cost is mileage, provides nine credit hours each from Labor and Industry. Christine Mundas, Brenda Santiago, Susan Putt, and Kathy Melville in probation services, would attend the Administrative Assistance Conference in Harrisburg, May second, $796 total. Registrations plus meals provide six hours credits from board probation parole. James Doty and Ethan Widel, probation services, the FETC Course Three in Harrisburg, March twelfth. Cost is meals, eight credit hours, credit hours from FETC. Heather Whitman in probation services, motivational interviewing at State College, May twenty-second, thirty dollar registration plus meals, six credit hours from the Juvenile Crime Justice Commission. Cynthia Howard, probation officer in probation services, CPCMS new user, fiscal training in Mechanicsburg, June fourth, fifth, and sixth, no cost for registration, cost for mileage, eighteen credit hours from the Board of Probation Parole. And Dwight Penberth and Matthew Klein for probation services, Control Force Level 192 Defense Tactics, Department Instructor Certification, Mechanicsburg, May twentieth, twenty-first to twenty-second, $1,040 total, and $570 each, plus meals and tolls, twenty-four credit hours for the JCGs.
Make a motion to approve the attendance at the mandated conferences.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve those conferences. Any question or comment? Any question or comment on any of those? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And requested conferences for Ruth Snyder, Ryan Wertz, Scott Barry, and Sam Ortiz at CAP, the Annual Community Action Symposium in Harrisburg, May 7th, 8th, and 9th. No fee to attend, cost is mileage, funds are budgeted.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve that CAP request. Any question or comment? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
The DA's Detective Bureau, Todd Hirsch, Matt Brindley, and Dave Schaefer would like to attend the death scene awareness in Harrisburg, May 9th, $255 total registration, no other costs, and funds are budgeted. No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve District Attorney's Office request. District Attorney's Office request. Any question or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Jocelyn Stecom in MHIDEI would like to attend the PA CARES Training Summit, 2019, in Denver, May 22nd. Cost is mileage and funds are budgeted. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the MHIDEI request. Any questions or comment? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Also MHIDEI, Holly Leahy and Susan Douglas would like to attend the RMTS Pilot Training, which is Random Moment in Time Study, in Harrisburg, March 13th. Cost is mileage, funds are budgeted. Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that MHIDEI request. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And lastly, Andrew Przycki in Planning GIS Office. This is the PA GIS Conference in State College, May 13th through the 15th. Cost is $209, plus lodging, meals, and mileage, and funds are budgeted, but she has to focus. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the GIS request. Any question or comment? This is a big week for him because he just won the Wellness Award, or Door Prize yesterday, so he's having a great week. Any questions are coming? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Jamie, good job.
There you go.
Good morning, Commissioner of the Community Director of Children and Youth. I'm here to present second quarter invoices for your approval, in the amount of $1,539,933.15. I would recommend a 80% quarter invoices.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those second quarter invoices. Any question or comment? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you, operator.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would like to introduce yourself, and then you may proceed.
My name is Nicole Eisenhardt. I'm from the DA's office. I am here presenting the Voca grant extension. Our current Voca grant ends the end of June of this year, so they have, PCCD has created a 15-month extension of that grant. The total allotted to Lebanon County is $154,366. And that will run until the end of September of 2020. $99,000 of that would be personnel and salaries. We have four advocates partially funded under the Voca grant. So this would cover that Voca portion of their services as well as the provision of an on-call advocate. A small amount of overtime, basically when their services are required outside business hours for trials or for law enforcement, that sort of thing. Medical benefits are covered, mainly at the percentage of their hours that are covered. And the total for that would be $47,000, as well as $864 for trainings that are required for the advocates of their PCCD, who administers the grant. And $7,379 for supplies, things like UCM, our case management, the copier, a hot spot that we provide victims access to, the self-boat, the alcohol advocates possess, supplies, that sort of thing. These are all expenses that are consistent with prior grants for the grant extension.
Seek a motion.
Make a motion to approve the grant request.
Second the motion?
The motion is second to approve Nicole's very concise presentation. Any question or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. You ready? Yep. Full set? Yep. Good morning.
Mr. Harley, good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to introduce yourself in your position and so on?
Sure. Richard Harley, Vice President of Treasury Management Services for Wellspan Health.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And Jamie, do you want to explain?
Yeah, so Mr. Harley's here today to request your approval on a primarily refinancing, I guess, of Wellspan Health, the amount of $600 million across their entire operation. And it's my understanding that because Lebanon County has a facility in its jurisdiction, you need to report the approval of the commissioners for that, so... That's correct. Sort of an entree for whatever it is.
This is the act for Phil Haven as well.
If you have Phil Haven, Good Samaritan Hospital in Lebanon County. That's correct. County municipal financing rules require us to seek approval from the county commissioners in each of the counties where there's potential that we would spend money from the proceeds of this bond issue. As Jamie pointed out, most of these proceeds are for refinancings of existing debt that was financed through the York County General Authority of South Central Pennsylvania. And that is the authority we're using in this case because of the refinancing. We are issuing some new money. There's a potential that we would spend some of that new money in Lebanon County, and that's why we're here today. As required, the Act mandated that a hearing be held, which took place on February 20th. That's correct. And it was advertised as required, and I believe I had provided you with a copy of the minutes of that public hearing. And so this requires a resolution from the county commissioners declaring that it's desirable for the welfare of the county of Lebanon for this project and refinancing to take place.
And could you just explain all the counties that are involved in this?
Sure. We sought approval from Lebanon, Lancaster, New York, Adams, Cumberland, Franklin County.
Thank you. Nicole, you're single.
Single with no liability to any of the counties.
I'll make a motion to approve signing of the Wellspan for the $600 million for all of the represent counties on behalf of Lebanon County.
Second motion.
We have a motion and second tonight, just to disclose my relationship with Good Samaritan as a board member, an advisory board member, I'll say. With no pecuniary interest in this transaction at all, so by virtue of those two things, disclosure and no interest, I do not have a conflict of interest, and I will not participate in anything as well.
Are you sure? I'm just curious because we don't...
Well, because what?
As you're on the board.
I just disclosed that I was on the board. I have no pecuniary interest, and I did check this with our solicitor, David Warner. Again, we don't cross this often, and those are the two tests. So we have a motion and a second. And any other comment, questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I scan another resolution? Yeah, everybody, okay. Please sign. Okay, then. Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay.
Who else is mine? I'll organize my advisory boards now first. First, I have an appointment for the Lebanon County Housing Redevelopment Authority for Craig Gates, who would be appointed to a five-year term, which would end February 9th of 2024. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we have proposed debates. Any question or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
I have the reappointment of four members of the advisory board of the Renova Center, and they would be, if they were reappointed, they would serve another three-year term, which would expire January 1st, 2021. They are Verda Baltaser, Alicia LaFrance, Julie Baum, and Suzanne Kilmore.
Second.
Second.
Make a motion and second to approve those appointments. Any question or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
I have a recommendation from the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse to appoint a new member to fill the vacancy in the optional category, and that would be for Jennifer Easter. She is employed with Wellspan Health, resides in Lebanon County.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question on the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
For the Lebanon County Commission for Women, we have two individuals up for renewals. They would be Ann Decker and Donna Williams, and they have agreed to serve a second term, effective February 19th, which would expire on February 22nd of 2022. And Roberta Brumble is not seeking a second term, so we'll have another member be appointed. Move to approve Ann Decker and Donna Williams.
Second.
I'll disclose that I am engaged on with the commission. I have no pecuniary interest in this transaction. If I'm right, I'm just disclosing my connection with them. So I'm going to be voting for this motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Also, by way of informing you, Brooke Smith has resigned due to a change of her employment. She's on a leave. So we'll have to hit... And also, we have a resignation from Ralph Watts for the Lebanon Valley Destination Marketing Organization Board, and so we'll await a recommendation to fill that vacancy as well. I have an application for County Liquid Fuels Aid. They are, it's for West Lebanon Township, who would like to use their funds for line painting, which had a cost of $1,500, and their allocation would be $1,500. And also for North London Dairy Township, would like to use their allocation for a 2019 paving project. Total cost of that project is $299,936. Their allocation from the county would be $8,068.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. It includes West Lebanon.
And pay taxes.
Any question or comment beyond that? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
I have a Work Ready Grant application for Community Action Partnership. This is an annual grant used for the Work Ready Program from the Commonwealth. This year's grant is in the amount of $108,174 and runs from January 1st, 2019, to September 30th, 2019. Make a motion to accept the grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the CAP grant request. Any question or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
I have an exemption request for disabled veteran Lorenzo Green of East Main Street, Anvil, Beethold, agree criteria for the exemption for real estate taxes.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that exemption for taxes, property taxes. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
That's all I have. I'm going to hold off on that one for the next time. I have a couple other things to add to it. Okay? I think that's the next meeting.
Anything else for the good?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Stand adjourned. Thank you very much.